The Arts of Planning Board to Order. First on the agenda, plans not requiring subdivision approval. We have none. Also at seven, we have the Municipal Vulnerability Program. The public listening session, which will be presented by CMRPC and our representative from the town of Oxford is Jared. So Jared, you want to pick it off?
Let me pull this down, just so I don't fog up here. Well, good evening. I'm Jared Duvall, DPW Director. Appreciate you having us here tonight. We're here to talk about, along with Simon, here's Mary Hannah from CMRPC, here tonight to talk about the efforts that we've undertaken here surrounding the hazard mitigation planning process and Municipal Vulnerability Prepariness Program planning effort. So tonight, I'll just say a few words just leading into the presentation that Mary Hannah will go through. She's going to talk a little bit about where we've been to date with this planning process and where we still need to go. But the MVP program, as it's called, is a very critical program, especially as far as public works goes. You know, our charge is to plan, design, construct, maintain all of the town's infrastructure. And what we're trying to do through this program and the planning process is identify areas of town where there may be vulnerabilities to climate change, where some of our risks may lie. It also, part of the process is to identify strengths. So it's not only weaknesses, but strengths as well. As this board knows, we've recently revamped the storm water management bylaw, so things like that as part of this planning process have come to light, and we identify it, again, as either a strength, a weakness, and then we can sort of prioritize our plans accordingly. And what this program does, it then sets us up for action-level grants. Once we've achieved that MVP, once we've gone through the MVP planning process, we achieve that MVP designation through the state's process, we can then apply for actual grants that we can take care of these infrastructure issues, you know, that we prioritize. So again, very critical process. A big part of this planning process is public engagement. So it's not only us town officials as our core team, which involves DPW, police, fire, planning, but it's engaging the public as well and seeing what they believe are vulnerabilities and risks and what they've witnessed in, you know, this town. So we've done that through a couple of workshop sessions now, and this is sort of that next step now is to open it up to the public as, you know, in a listening session. So very happy to be here, very, you know, pleased with the process to date. I'd like to thank Mary Hannah and her team, you know, for the support that they've lent us thus far. Thank Tony Sousa, Planning and Economic Development Director, for his support. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mary Hannah.
Thanks. Could you pull up the presentation, please? Thank you. All right, so thank you for the introduction, Jared. I'm Mary Hannah Smith. I'm an Associate Planner with the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, and I'm the project lead for Oxford. So Jared already kind of explained why Oxford's going through this process. I think what he didn't mention was the hazard, we're also doing a hazard mitigation plan update. The last plan in town was published in 2016, so it's good for five years, so now it is due for an update. It's expired at this point. And then we're going through the MVP planning process in part to earn that MVP designation, which would make Oxford eligible for the MVP action grants. As I mentioned, we're doing sort of a combination project, so we're going to be producing one report. It'll join together aspects of the MVP program and the hazard mitigation plan requirements that FEMA stipulates for us. Those two programs, they share a lot of similarities. They both focus on natural hazards, so it's just a nice, efficient way to accomplish both program objectives at the same time. So this slide just clarifies what a hazard mitigation plan is. It's different from an emergency preparedness or emergency response plan. It addresses natural hazards, like the ones listed here, so flooding, earthquakes, wildfires, drought. But it focuses on how the town can mitigate damage from the natural hazards through proactive measures before they happen, rather than coming up with, you know, shelter plans or emergency preparedness plans when the disasters occur. So it's kind of trying to avoid the impacts before the disasters happen. And then, because we're including the MVP process in this plan, we'll also consider how Oxford might be impacted and might need to adapt to climate change. This slide just again explains what hazard mitigation is. It really focuses on permanently reducing or preventing loss of life, what you can do proactively. And according to a 2019 report by the National Institute of Building Sciences, for every $1 spent on the federal mitigation grants, so those grants coming through FEMA, it saves U.S. as a society $6 in response costs. So there are real advantages to being proactive with mitigation. This is our process specifically for this project. We, I think, came together as a core team back in December. We published a public survey. We brought the core team together to discuss hazards and identify critical infrastructure, and we've been collecting background information for the final report. The CRB workshop, Community Resilience Building Workshop, that we held back in January, that is a key part of the MVP process. So during that workshop, we brought together, invited stakeholders to identify climate change impacts and hazards, to complete an assessment of the vulnerabilities and strengths in town, and then to come up with some initial actions that Oxford can take in the future to mitigate its risk. Now we're at the stage where we're doing the public listening session. Then we'll be incorporating any feedback we receive into a final report, and then we'll have some additional listening sessions after we have a draft report ready to publish. And then we plan to wrap up this project by May of this year. So as I mentioned, one of the early steps in the process was meeting with the core team to review known hazard locations and critical infrastructure. And I know this is an unreadable map, but this just kind of demonstrates the level of detail that we went into in that process. This slide lists some of the new hazards that were identified by the core team. So some of the additions to the 2016 plan were flooding along Route 12 at the 676 Main location, icing and flooding near, on Route 12, near Worcester Gears and Racks, Main Street flooding at Jackson Court, the West Industrial Drive culvert issues, and road washout, some backyard flooding near Sneed Drive and Grassy Pond, and the Old Webster Road and Robbins Road culvert. And then we also removed the Main Street south of Pratt Ave flood location, because that's been addressed since the last plan was published. For wildfire, we added an incident in the Greenbrier Recreation Area off of Rocky Hill Road. And for hurricanes, we added the roof on Fire Station Two, a couple of the older mill chimneys, specifically the Worcester Gears and Racks location and the Buffonville Mill chimney. And then we added Barton Street building structural issues. Then lastly, for snowstorms, we added the Oxford Community Center has an undersized So we launched a survey back in January. So far, we've received 15 responses. That's not really enough responses for us to draw too many conclusions from it, but some specific comments related to new flooding locations that hadn't been identified by the core team yet. A lot of concern about flooding along Sutton Ave specifically, concern about wind damage such as swalling trees, and then a lot of interest in improving storm water management in town. So now we'll just get into some more details about what was discussed at the CRB workshop. The core team's been meeting to plan this workshop since October, and then we held it back in January. We had 18 people attend, and this included local officials, local board members, including some members of the planning board, and then some local businesses. And today's listening session is open to the public. And just to mention, the four core team members are Jared and Tony, as well as Chief McDonald and Judy Lochner with the Conservation Commission. The objectives of the workshop are to, one, define extreme weather and climate-related hazards; two, to identify the current and future vulnerabilities and strengths in Oxford; three, to develop prioritized actions for the community and broader stakeholder networks; and then four, to identify opportunities for Oxford to advance actions that will mitigate the risk of natural hazards and build resilience.
Changes in precipitation from climate change are com-
So I recorded some presentations in advance for the people that attended the workshop, so that's what the narration was that you were hearing. So in this slide, it just shows one of the things that Oxford can expect by the end of the century is increase in precipitation up to 3.67 inches per year. So the amount of annual total precipitation is going up, and just to be warned, I have a couple more slides that are probably going to do that.
Heavy rain-
Yep. So this is extreme weather. So in addition to increases in annual precipitation, Oxford's also expected to see increases in extreme levels of precipitation. So one way to define that are days with precipitation that's greater than one inch in a single day. So Oxford might see an additional 1.53 days that hit that threshold by the end of the century. Oxford might see more frequent extreme weather events, but also more extreme weather events, and not just rainfall, but also, you know, high wind events as well.
Heavy rain-
All right. And then lastly, rising temperatures. You can see that this graph is fairly dramatic. This shows that by the end of the century, Oxford is expected to see annual days with a max temperature exceeding 90 degrees Fahrenheit. It's expected to see an increase up to 26.65 days compared to 2000. So that's almost an extra month of days that might hit that 90-degree threshold. So we talked about some of the other hazards specifically prior to the workshop. The ones that were identified by the core team as presenting the highest risk to the town were flooding, winter storms, hurricanes, and then extreme wind events, so thunderstorms or tornadoes. At the workshop, we asked participants to consider those hazards, and then to consider how they might impact these three topic areas: infrastructure, society, and the environment. And so what we did with the attendees was list as many features of the town as you could think about that fall under these three categories. During the workshop, we structured everything by filling out this matrix. So on the far left side of the screen, that is where we list all the features in town. So for example, dams would fall under infrastructure, senior housing would fall under society, and wetlands would fall under the environment. Then we asked attendees to, as they're listing features, like dams, for example, we asked them to tell us where they're located, to tell us who owns those features. Are they publicly owned or privately owned, or are they owned by the state, for example, or maybe the Army Corps? And then to tell us whether they consider that feature to be a vulnerability or strength for the community. And so up to that point, sort of compiling a list of town features that might be a vulnerability or strength, where they're located, and who owns them, that occupied the first day of the workshop. Then on the second day of the workshop, we had all the stakeholders start coming up with actions that Oxford could take to address any vulnerabilities that were identified. And so now I'll just go through what that actual discussion was. So for infrastructure, some of the vulnerabilities identified included stormwater flooding, and this was a town-wide concern, but also was identified at specific locations, like Industrial Park West Road. Dams was a concern or vulnerability. We identified Bartlett, McKinstry, and Lowe's Pond Dams, all because they have maintenance issues that may need to be addressed. We identified tree damage and power lines, specifically hazard trees or trees that aren't in the national grid right-of-way, but could still cause damages or outages. Water supply was identified, and we didn't have a representative from Aquarian at the meeting, so there was concern about whether the water supply is resilient to drought, and concern about the location of the Aquarian pumping station and the floodplain. But again, we didn't have anyone from Aquarian to really check those issues against. Waste collection was a concern, specifically a lack of mandatory recycling and a lack of hazardous waste drop-off locations. And then there was a concern about connections with neighboring towns, and that towns may not be considering worst-case scenarios around mutual aid and interconnected systems. So if problems occur, what's sort of the backup to the backup to the backup for systems that are connected sort of regionally? Some of the strengths were the Hodges Village Dam. It seems to have regular maintenance and a robust emergency planning process. The updated stormwater bylaw was a strength. It was identified as a step in the right direction, and so now the town needs to educate residents and enforce the bylaw. Then we have the public sewer and water lines. These were a strength because expanding access to public utilities could be an economic development advantage, especially for businesses. And the high school has an emergency shelter, which is equipped with a generator and is used as a shelter already, whereas the senior center and the Carbuncle Center do not have generators, and the community center has a generator that's on backorder. The infrastructure actions that we identified include this list. This is not the complete list, but these were some of the actions that were prioritized by workshop attendees via post-workshop survey. These include assessing critical linkages and encouraging municipal cooperation, maintaining emergency preparedness plan, and assessing the code-read signup rate, educating the public of the need to invest in a new DPW building, conducting a detailed culvert inventory, addressing the Industrial Park Road West flooding, as well as flooding on Main Street adjacent to the P&amp;W Railroad Bridge, removing the Bartlett Pond Dam, and completing a comprehensive wastewater management plan. Some of the societal vulnerabilities included the isolation of the Orchard Hill Apartments, declining community volunteerism and participation in government, the financial strain on the town's tax base, changing demographics and a need for a broad outreach and perhaps use of translation services, the vulnerability of low-income and senior housing to all the natural hazards. And then strengths were the town's churches, the food shelf, food pantry, local community organizations, like volunteering organizations, the town's senior center, the town's housing authority, large businesses that could perhaps contribute volunteers, or might be able to aid in volunteers if an emergency happened and you needed help with the emergency response, for example, and then a potential sewer line extension. Societal actions included reevaluating evacuation routes, considering the likelihood of future roadway flooding, hosting a town volunteer fair to get more volunteers involved, making resources on APR, so agricultural preservation restrictions in Chapter 61, more readily available, investing in additional DPW staff to ensure that the MVP and HMP project ideas, in addition to capital projects that are already on DPW's list, are efficiently implemented and maintained, and then working with the property owner of Orchard Hill with resident outreach regarding community needs. And again, this isn't the complete list, these were just the ones prioritized by the Environmental vulnerabilities included French River flooding and the lack of a watershed organization to manage issues or improve the river, tree health and damage, and the outages that these cause, water quality issues in streams and ponds, the potential for PFAS chemical contamination in the future, concerns about pollinator health, invasive species, brush fires, greenfield solar development, and then septic leakage. And also, there was some concern about sewer line infiltration as well. Terms of strengths, one group discussed the French River at length and the opportunity that it represents for outdoor recreation. Wetlands were noted as a strength for their flood control potential. The Aquarian water supply source, we did mention it as a concern earlier, but it was also noted as a strength based on the fact that it's an artesian well that taps into an aquifer rather than groundwater. One group talked about the upcoming OSRP process as an opportunity to incorporate climate resilience into open space management, and to identify open space opportunities that might contribute to climate resilience. And then one group talked about the Midstate Trail as a recreational feature that links Oxford to other communities and is a town asset. Environmental actions included seeking funding or grants to assist with identifying and remediating impaired water bodies, encouraging upcoming OSRP processes to consider the impact of climate change during all future open space and recreation decision-making, education and enforcement on good septic system maintenance, hosting educational materials regarding practices to protect native pollinators, working with national grid to reevaluate criteria and plan for cutting trees, and updating regulations and bylaws to reference climate resilient tree species rather than native tree species. So that's the summary of the CRB workshop. In terms of next steps, CMRPC will be working on completing the draft report. Then we'll host some, I think we have four additional listening sessions planned for later in the spring. We'll get the final report submitted to the EA by the end of June, but hopefully a little bit earlier. At that point, Oxford will get the MVP community certification, and the core team, you know, will meet at least annually to, you know, update sort of the project status and evaluate whether new projects need to be added to the MVP list. The HMP update approval process is a little bit more complicated. NEMA needs to review the plan, then FEMA reviews the plan and issues a conditional approval, then the Board of Selectmen will vote to adopt the plan, and then FEMA will issue final plan approval. And at that point, Oxford's plan will be effective for another five years. As I mentioned, we published a survey in January. We only have 15 responses so far, so if anyone that's in attendance tonight could spread the word about the survey and ask your neighbors to complete it, we'd really appreciate that. We'd like to get as much input as possible from the public. Tony also set up a landing page on a section of the town's website, I think within the planning board section of the website. So this is the URL for the survey, but you can also find it on the town's website. And then these are our email addresses if anyone has any questions or comments after tonight's meeting, but I think we have time to take some questions and comments right now.
Okay. Boy, I spent the six hours going through this thing. It was kind of comprehensive. It was, it's kind of difficult to even do. You know, up on this board, I don't deal with thinking about vulnerabilities like that. And it was a good learning session, I thought, for myself. As far as your survey, I did receive one of my email. I did it. I filled it out, but I don't think the general public has any idea that survey is out there. So if Tony puts something there, I think it's going to get to the front page of the website.
Yeah, we have posted it on DPW's Facebook page. We did a press release with that link. It was in the latest newsletter that had gone out from the Town Manager's Office. So that link would be, it's in the DPW article. So it explains sort of this process, a little overview, and then has the link in there encouraging the public to participate. And I believe that was shared on the town's Facebook page as well, at least the press release post on the DPW's Facebook. So it's been out there on some, mostly electronic, you know, sources.
I'm not a Facebook guy.
Yeah, no, of course, of course.
I haven't seen that.
No, not, and some people aren't, so that's, you know-
There's a lot of the younger generation that's heavily involved with Facebook. I'm just not one of those guys.
We could always find a different, you know, media avenue, too, to post it on, whether it's newspaper article or something.
I go to the Oxford website, and I didn't see anything regarding public participation in the-
Yeah.
I know I got one personally because I was a member of that discussions.
Mary Hannah suggested, too, we put it right on the homepage of the website.
That's right.
You're not even going to dig into the planning board's page, so we'll do that as well.
Okay. All right, super.
And just so everyone's aware, too, I wanted to, I forgot to mention this sort of in the lead-in to Mary Hannah's presentation, but we did receive a near $27,000 grant to undertake this process through EA. So that's really allowed us to engage CMRPC so they could guide us through this process, which, like you said, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, it's robust in scale, I mean, this planning effort. It's not just infrastructure, which is obviously what I go to first, is, you know, with DPW, but it is the societal considerations, environmental considerations as well. So there's a lot to unpack.
Yeah, I looked at those graphs you have of total rainfall and the extent of rainfall. I know the post-development work that's done now takes a hundred-year storm. I think that hundred-year storm is obsolete, a hundred years back. We got to go, we got to make it maybe a hundred years forward, because a lot of these, you know, stormwater systems that are being put on property will be overwhelmed. They'll be overwhelmed now because we've already had instances where they've been overwhelmed. And they'd say it's the hundred-year storm already? Yeah, there's going to be a lot more of them, according to the data that's coming out, so.
I think it's, no one can attest, right after the past summer, at least, too. We've had, you know, two culvert failures, one of which, Mary Hannah included a photo up there on-
Oh yeah, Fast and Furious, that's the worst thing that can-
The frequency and intensity of these rainfall events, it's recurring more frequently.
It's happening.
Right, it's happening more frequently now, so. And you see the impacts on undersized drainage systems. Those are, you know, in terms of what types of projects we'll be able to undertake with these action grants, those are it, you know, culvert, undersized culverts, undersized drainage systems. There's planning efforts as well, so it's not just- planning efforts as well, so it's not just construction work, but there's additional planning and studies that we can do with these action grants, so, and beyond, again, beyond just infrastructure, that's where I like to go to, but, so yeah, very worthwhile endeavor.
Anyone else here? Anyone in the public want to make a comment on this particular presentation that was just done? No? A lot of people here.
Quick question, if you don't mind. Has the town ever considered mapping the entire town, doing a topographic map of the entire town as a tool for this sort of thing? I don't know what it costs, but I know years and years ago, I happened to see the city of Worcester had it done, and it was like a two-foot contour map of the whole city, which I thought could be a pretty important tool.
Yeah, they know there's, you know, published maps available, right? Not at that, probably, kind of interval USGS maps, that sort of thing, but the town, we've not looked into that as of late, to actually get detail-level topography or survey, but it could be, could be, you know, worthwhile, certainly.
I would imagine it'd be something you could use to put watersheds and that sort of thing.
Which is part of our, you know, and Judy Lochner really is really in touch with our MS4 permit program, and that's part of what we need to do is identifying watersheds in town and drainage interconnections and outfalls, and we have, I would say today, we've got a pretty good asset management system in place, where we have a lot of those features mapped in ARC GIS, drainage, you know, our pavement management program, so we're, we've done a lot, we still need to do maybe a more detailed inventory with culverts specifically, but again, you can't manage what you don't know, so it's about doing those assessments and getting it all housed in a location where it's readily accessible and easy to use, and that's been, you know, GIS maps are really the standard practice now, so.
Okay, Mary, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Jared, thank you for spearheading this program.
Of course, thank you.
Okay, the time being 7:30, we have a public hearing, 6 Boulder Parkway, application for a special permit and site plan review and approval. Applicant Darcy Cook of Smash Hit Two LLC. The owner is Boulder Industrial Park LLC. It's an amusement and recreational use. First read the public hearing notice. Pursuant to the provision of the Oxford zoning bylaw, Chapter 5, Table 2, uses in a commercial district and Chapter 15, projects requiring review, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 14, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the town hall on a special permit and site plan review and approval application submitted by Darcy Cook of Smash Hit Two LLC to allow an amusement and recreational type establishment under the use of all other uses consistent with the intent of the chapter to occupy space within an existing building that has existing parking on property located at 6 Boulder Parkway, North Oxford, Mass. in the General Business Zoning District owned by Boulder Industrial Park LLC and shown on Assessus Map 9, parcel AO6. The application of plans may be reviewed in the town hall, and anyone wishing to be here should be here. And I'll just update on some of the correspondence we did get. The only new correspondence today was a revised map that showed the parking table. And on Wednesday, February 9, from Ricky Sterrett of the Board of Health, she sent an email to Mary saying, hi, Smash Hit Two is all set with the Board of Health. So there was specific comments made when this thing was submitted, but the applicant has addressed all that. So I know the applicant is here, want to come up to the board. This applicant has been through technical review, they're basically using a portion of Building 6 in Boulder Parkway, and they're basically not changing the footprint, they're doing some enhancement so that they can operate their business, but basically, there's no construction going on within the building, changing anything like that, and again, the packing does exist. Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Basically, we're here to determine if the change of use is appropriate, and also to receive the site plan.
So Rich, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Tony, have you reviewed this to make sure that it meets the zoning in terms of parking for the square footage of the three buildings? Of the three different uses, I mean?
So we have looked at it, and we feel like it does meet the requirements.
So it does? And have you, have you been to the site and looked at it to make sure that, you know, they draw it on an old plan, but does it still look like that in the field?
Roughly, roughly.
Okay.
Today, we had the building inspector and the deputy chief fire inspector both come through a walk-through at our facility.
So we're just approving parking for?
Well, let's talk about the use. The use is unusual, I'd say.
Yeah.
You take out your aggression on old pieces of furniture or whatever you want to smash, basically.
It's just a fun place, yeah. It's a fun place to break stuff.
The purpose is to grab a baseball bat and smash stuff within the facility. The two separate, two separate areas to do that, so they can only allow so many people in there to do that, so that's where their number of visitors maxed out at 12, so that they.
By appointment only?
By appointment only.
Online.
Do you reserve a time and come in for a session?
Yep, block time for a session, correct. So we know in advance if it's going to be two people coming through the door or five people coming through the door for the use of the room.
So after the stuff is smashed, where does it go?
Yep, so if it's wood, glass, plastic break piece, it goes right into our dumpster on property. If it's metal, it goes into a medical, metal recycling.
So where is the dumpster on the property?
10 feet from the property, from the, from the building.
So.
On the backside?
Yeah.
Yeah, so on the backside, I'm going to take out my little map for you.
Are you building 6A?
Nope, we are B, 6B.
All right, so I don't see, I don't see like a dumpster labeled.
Yep, so on the original documents that were sent with you guys on the first time that we submitted, there's an outside drawing, and on the outside of the drawing, you'll see that the trailer has been, the dumpster is located off the backside of the wall, outside of the door, so you'll see, I don't know, we didn't label like each sheet of paper, but you guys should have a demographic of this. It's not, it's not on this, it was in the original red packet.
Personal submissions.
Yeah.
I have an extra copy.
Oh, thanks, Tony.
I think we should, I think we should combine all these together, Tony, in our, in our package here. I might have taken one of these, Mary, I'm sorry. I had two of them in there. I'll leave one here. But yeah, you're right, this plan does not show, thank you for bringing that up, Craig, it doesn't show what's happening on the outside, okay.
The parking one? No, the parking one just shows the parking one.
Just the parking, so all those have to be combined together. So those, those initial ones have to be incorporated too, because you did, you did show a good job of where the stuff was going to go, outside the building. It's a fenced-in area.
Yep.
So you have a trailer and a dumpster right in front of Unit 6C?
Not anymore. So 6C, there's a solid wall, there's no doors, there's no entrance there, that's an entire, that entire length of the building is a solid wall, so the trailer actually has been relocated on the property, it's not anywhere near the building at all. The only thing next to the building is the dumpster.
It'll be close to the door coming out, that's how it'll get cleaned out, so it may come back a little bit more.
You know what, and it's not you, it's just that we're getting these, we're getting these site plans submitted on, you can't really follow everything all together, and it's, I know you save money by taking an old plan and drawing it and coloring it.
That came from the landlord.
Huh?
These came from the landlord.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
I've tried to tell these landlords that that plan is a dynamic piece of their building, basically.
Well, the best, the best way to tell them, Rich, is they give us a real site plan, showing the actual building, actual parking, because when you just take a proposed plan, you don't know if it was built that way, but, you know. So you only required to have one handicap spot?
That's what I've been told. Yep, and it's painted, and it, there's a sign posted.
And everything is, everything's striped, visible?
Yep, and we made pictures of those, and we submitted copies of that to the fire inspector and to the building inspector, so they have photographs on record.
So in the, in this picture, you've got a, what is the 40-foot, the 40-foot?
That's a wide open space.
Okay.
Wide open space. Just shows that there's a lot of big gravel space back there. The concern for the fire department was that they just wanted to be able to get around the whole building, so that's why we should map that all out so they could see how much space there was around the building.
And they can get around the whole building?
Yep, no problem. No three-point turn required.
Awesome.
Okay. I think a lot of what we get on these change-of-use things is on napkins and paper like that, you know what I mean?
But we don't have to accept it, though. And I know, you know, you, you want to be great for business and blah, 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 but...
Well, that's why I just said to Tony, if we, if we, if we have to incorporate all this into our file so that it stays there and this town knows what it is, but, you know, have her go and redo a site plan? Have the landlord go and redo a site plan? I mean, the original site plan was done by Quinn Engineering, they could have done that, but.
So Tony, this application meets the criteria for site plan approval?
So I believe so.
Well, my, my, my comment on that would be, since there's no construction going on, the packing already exists, there's no, we, we could have done a minor site plan approval and allow the departments to sign off on the building permit, so to speak. That's my idea on the site plan. To me, the main reason for this...
Is adequate provision for trash removal, is adequate parking, nothing's changing to the footprint of the building, it's a permitted use in the zone.
We're basically here having a public hearing for the change of use because it's a special permit, because we don't document a.
Right.
Amusement facility that you take baseball bats and smash stuff, okay? This was an existing building in Worcester that they're bringing into Oxford. So is there anyone in the public have anything to say about this? Tony, you want to say something?
I was just going to say, so in essence, it's primarily all interior that we're looking at here, and outside what's existing with some improvements for the parking.
So it's, it's a novel use before us because no one's getting arrested. Am I wrong?
No.
Okay.
It's a good way to take out aggression.
Okay.
Seems to be successful, she wants to come into Oxford.
So this will be your second?
No, it's the first.
We're moving, we're moving here, you have a big, we have a bigger location here.
Okay.
They proved it's, people are willing to do it, right? That's basically it, so. Anyone from the public have anything, comments on this particular?
I think most of them are all family and related back there.
Well, let's hear from the pro-mayhem people, come on.
It is pro-mayhem.
They're just ready to smash, they just want to play some TV.
Okay.
Come join me, let's go.
We don't have a transfer station, so we don't get to transfer to, then smash it up and throw it away. There you go!
Might be an opportunity here for some questions.
Doesn't end up in the woods.
Drop off.
Yeah.
Drop it off. So pick up.
All right, no one else has anything to say? I'd like to do something different from a board perspective as far as voting. I've been, you know, I've been watching a lot of meetings on the, on the website, and I think the roll call type voting is more appropriate than just everyone saying aye and nay or whatever, and so it'll just go, we make a, we make a motion, it'll just go down the line as you vote, and I'll just summarize it for Mary, too. I think it's appropriate, more appropriate that way, so. I'll entertain a motion to allow this change of, this special permit for this use.
So moved?
Second.
Second by Rajah, further discussion? There being none? Go ahead and start with you, Christine, how do you vote?
So Christine Bird votes yes.
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 And I vote yes, that's unanimous vote from the board, so we allow that use. Now let's address the, the site plan. I agree that we should at least keep all the documentations of what the inside and the outside of the building would be, something similar to that, yeah, put it in there. It's in the, everything is in this red folder that she supplied and in the file. I would recommend, I recommend that, because nothing is happening on the site exterior-wise outside of that, that any construction is needed, that we vote as this is a minor site plan, and we vote to approve it as a minor site plan and allow the, the town departments to handle the building permit, so to speak, and run it right through, and we deal with it that way. If you agree with that, make that motion.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second in by Matthew, okay? Further discussion? There being none? Go ahead, Christine.
I, I say yes.
Yes?
Aye. Yes.
Pearson, aye.
Would you say?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And I vote yes, so that's, that's also a unanimous vote.
So good luck.
So we're good?
Good luck, that's it, you made it.
Go smash.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Who do you expect to open?
You've got a line, getting ready to go with it.
So I talked to Tom downstairs this morning, and he told me it's looming, Miss Mary sends him the stuff, he'll give me the building license, and everything else has been signed off, so hopefully we can be open by Friday.
Okay, good for you.
Oh, wow, that's swift.
Yeah, we're like business in a box, we're ready to go.
All right, great.
Good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
Welcome to Oxford.
Thank you, we're excited.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 24.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mark.
Second?
I can't second.
I know.
I was a...
Raj, you want to second it?
I did.
You did? I didn't hear you, sorry. Okay, do a roll call again. Go ahead, Christine.
I abstain.
Abstain.
Yes.
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 And I vote yes. That's five affirmatives and one abstention. Carry. Next, new business. Wait, I don't, anyone have any old business? Nothing on the agenda, but you're welcome to have, bring up something old if you want to. New business, okay, a discussion of potential zoning bylaw amendments and... A discussion of potential zoning bylaw amendments and potential zoning map amendments. I guess, Tony?
Yes.
Floor's yours.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members. So, basically, we put this under new business. Frankly, I was going to bring this up in my planning director's report to you. Would like to make a presentation at the next meeting to discuss, there is five potential zoning amendments for the, for the board's consideration and-
So, excuse me, Tony, so at the next town meeting?
At the next meeting of the planning board.
Oh, okay.
For the next town meeting.
Okay.
For May. Um, there's, there's five of them and I'll just provide a brief, a brief overview and certainly we're in this window where the, the warrant is open and, and certainly it's, it's up to the board for your consideration of this and perhaps some other opportunities, changes in the zoning bylaw. Uh, the first one is regards to earth removal. And our earth removal bylaw, looking at making some potential changes to require that when an applicant submits an earth removal application, that they have some type of previous approval, whether it be from this board or the Conservation Commission. There needs to be some type of nexus between simply getting an earth removal permit and ensuring that that's connected to an actual development project. One of the things that is, that has come up, for example, in our residential zoning districts, we do allow earth removal operations by, by special permit of, of the, of the Board of Selectmen. And, and there may not be a nexus at all to, to a development project. One may come before the town and submit an application and contemplate on having an actual development project. But the question remains, well, what is it? Is it a earth removal permit connected to an actual project or is it simply an earth removal operation? And this can get really challenging and particularly when we allow it by special permit in residential districts. So, in the, what I'd like to do in the presentation at the next meeting is to walk through that, some options, some considerations for, for this board and certainly also for the, for the Board of Selectmen to, to-
I think this is more Board of Selectmen. I don't want to walk all over Board of Selectmen toes. They've always been dealing with earth removal.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't mind helping them or even specifying that where to do something prior to them doing something. I don't mind anything like that. I think you should go through the Board of Selectmen and get their intake, their insight on what they'd like to see changed in their own-
Sure.
-bylaw.
Yes.
Because they're the ones that enforce earth removal, so.
Yes, and, and I will and we may very well see this item come up from referral.
Okay. Okay. I'm just saying, it's, it's more, they're, they're the permit granting authority on, on earth removal, so. You know, as far as I'm concerned, they're, they're, they're the top of the pile and they, they can filter it down and we can, we, I mean, a lot of our projects require earth removal, too. I understand that, but, again, the last one we were involved in went in front of the Board of Selectmen. You know, that pad site on Route 20?
Eastland?
Eastland.
Mm-hmm.
So, I just don't want to, I don't want to take anything over that the Board of Selectmen do.
Absolutely.
Unless, unless they want to subvert some of their authority.
Certainly, certainly. And we do have a few meetings between now and-
Okay. Sure.
And the, and the deadline.
Okay.
So, it is, and these are all a work in progress, too. So, for the next meeting, I may have an update on that and may not, but-
Okay.
Okay. The second item is under Chapter Two of our zoning bylaw, District Regulations, and it's the District Boundary Division. In essence, it's language that we have in Section 2.37 that, pardon me as I read this, but in essence, applying only to an existing lot that was split by the boundary at the time the boundary was adopted. So, this goes into the situation of where we have district boundaries that may divide a lot, not just one or two. We have some where there's three district boundaries. And what it states in our zoning bylaw is the lot of record. So, in order to, in order to be able to change it, requires a special permit of this board, certainly, but that the only lots where the lot of record at the time showed the boundary, the zoning district placed in. So, any changes to that lot 10, 30, 40 years later, the lot of record has changed from the time when that boundary was put in place. And therefore, an applicant could not come before the board for, for a special permit. What I'd be looking at here is essentially striking lot of record and to allow any lot where the boundary is divided to still require a special permit before the board, but essentially removing the lot of record at the time when the boundary was made.
That makes sense because times change. Lots change. Lots are combined. Other things happen.
So, so in reference, there's approximately 200 lots in town that, that this would benefit or impact, so. Third item is large-scale solar energy system battery storage. This would be to allow battery storage facilities, to establish them within the use table and to allow this board to consider them with some, some guidelines, some parameters through site plan and, and special permit. Currently now, we don't have a, a good home for battery storage facilities and these may be connected to our, our solar facilities in town. And, and by having a carve-out for battery storage, we can, I think we can set some, some better guidelines for, for prospective parties that are interested in that. We've gone a few inquiries over this, this past year.
Yeah. I mean, we have one solar farm on Farm and, a former Robbins land that they actually said they were going to put batteries on it. And I applauded them. They're the only one. Now, I'm not, I'm not sure you can enforce anybody to have batteries on their solar farm because I don't think that's the way the state law is written to have that. Now, I, if it was up to me, every, every one of them would have to, you know, throw some of their energy that they produce and store it in batteries so it can be used nighttime. You know? When they can't produce the energy it was supposed to, to have it. Because I, you know, I, I kind of, I find it fascinating that, how this whole system works, okay? Here, here you got a, you got a, a system that's built upon supplying electricity 24 hours a day, seven days a week, every day of the year continuously. And you throw these big solar stuff and then they, they, on a nice sunny day, they're throwing a lot of energy into the system. What's the producers to do? They're going to shut down their, their steam-driven system because all of a sudden? You know, it reminds me of Christmas Vacation when they, we powered up, as they finally powered up all the lights at this house and the whole, the whole city went brown. It was dying and they had to throw a nuclear switch on there to generate some more power. Just, you know, it was, you know, the whole thing, the whole thing is fascinating how it works. But my opinion is, yeah, you're getting electricity from the sun, but these, I don't, these ISO, I don't know what they call it, the places that generate all the electricity needed for a grid. How do they account for that? It's not continuous. One day you got great, great source of power and the next day it's raining, snowing, cloudy and then no power being generated. How do they account for that? That's why I, that's why if it was up to me, you know, you know, I know they're encouraging solar energy, but it's not being done right. It's going to be something that's contin, consistent. You know, you can count on it. And then these panels just degrade every year, too, and it, I don't, I don't know how they do it.
I think it's an issue of maturation of the business model and state regulation hasn't caught up because the solar providers are advantaged to, to sell their energy to the grid during daylight hours because it's a higher cost per kilowatt hour. So, they almost don't care about doing it at night when the cost per kilowatt order, the buy from the grid is cheaper. So, they just ignore it.
Yeah, you know. And well, they get, they're getting the retail price of the electricity.
Right.
They're not getting the wholesale price of the electricity. If they did, there probably wouldn't be any grids out there.
Yep.
Solar farms, you know?
And because of how the laws are written, they can charge more during peak use time, which is daytime. So, that's all they care about.
I just find it fascinating how the whole thing works. You know what I mean? We've got all the mega kilowatt, mega watts going out there.
You're saying battery, batteries on site would even it out.
Yeah.
It'd be a constant.
Yeah.
It makes for a more resilient power infrastructure to have that because if, if you had a battery plant in town that was serving power to the town and you had a cut with national grid, you know, somewhere in a border or town, you'd still have a power source in town. It may not meet all of the town's needs, but there'd be something. And, you know, that's some of the resilient stuff that I know the state's looking into, but, I mean, they're battling all these energy providers on all this stuff all the time, so.
You know, it's the-
I think we should encourage an ease of use and deployment of batteries.
The fact that a matter is solar, solar energy is more expensive than the other energies. Yet, we want, we want to get carbon neutral, okay? That's the whole goal, is to get carbon neutral. But it has to be done right, in my opinion. You're going to do it right, you gotta, you gotta be able to supply a constant amount of kilowatt hours day and night so that they can rely on you. So, Tony, I don't know where you're going with the battery thing, but we already had one where they proposed to put batteries in it. I don't know what we, I don't think we can-
Is the goal to make it easier for them to have a more structured process to develop battery systems?
In, in a way, to, to create a more structured process.
Okay.
So, that there's some clear guideline. So, we would envision, we would identify it in the use table, provide proper definitions, require special permit, site plan, but also, within the bylaw, allow to adopt rules and regulations with, with fire and DPW and, because this is an evolving area as well.
Sure.
As opposed to now, it, it would probably fall under miscellaneous use. Actually, that's where it would fall now with, with very little guidance on that.
When we did, it fell within the infrastructure of the-
The actual solar.
The solar farm they were building, going to build, okay? Instead of just having boxes that transferred power from the panels to the grid, it actually had a little building that had batteries in it to store. Now, how they were going to distribute it, I have no clue, but, you know, whether they were going to turn on at seven at night and go to, till they drain the batteries right down, I don't know. I don't know how they, how, how they would do that. They were the only ones that even proposed putting batteries in there. So, the rest of them, we never heard about batteries.
Yeah. Yeah, we've probably, Mary, we've probably gotten two or three in the last six months or so, general inquiries?
They have, and the standalone battery storage, not-
Oh, standalone batteries? That's, oh, so-
Not associated with an existing solar site. So, we don't have anything in our bylaw that allows for it. So, this would provide a place to allow for it.
Oh, okay. I, I had no idea that there's people that want to make money out of it.
There is a weird market in that of people buying energy during off-peak hours at midnight at a low kilowatt hour rate and then putting it back into the grid during the day at a higher rate using batteries. That there is actually a business for that. Believe it or not, it does exist.
Okay, Tony, I don't know.
People buy waste to make money.
Doesn't seem to go, doesn't seem to go in there with the solar system. They seem to be two separate things.
This is only a working document.
Let's get on, let's get on it because it's coming.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Exactly.
Okay. You're enlightening me. I didn't even know there were people out there that really wanted to do it separately like that.
And I think the state is highly encouraged.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
They have incentives for batteries. Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, this is how it's come around through, through building departments and all these inquiries sort of coming in. And we got together talking about it and saying, we need to give this a home.
Okay.
The fourth item is repeating the, the marijuana overlay district expansion. The same presentation, same language from last year. Whereas the planning board did give a favorable recommendation, the item can be reintroduced. If it was the opposite, if the board gave an unfavorable recommendation, then we'd have to wait two years. The at-town meeting would hope to be able to make a presentation this time to, to, to identify the, the work that's taking place, the opportunities that will be.
I think that'd be helpful.
Absolutely.
If they gave a, you know, because I think people just came in, they just had the diagram or whatever and they really didn't know exactly what was being proposed. So, I think that would be beneficial.
Yeah.
Show and take questions and-
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And, and again, the strategy is to, no changes to the actual language. Essentially refiling this, if you will. With the same presentation I provided last, last year. And, and hopefully, we'll have the opportunity to make that presentation at, at town meeting. The, the last one, former planning board member Le Blank brought this up. And looking into this, Southbridge Road, there's an area, Southbridge Road, that is, that was zoned years back, was originally commercial and it was zoned to R3 and-
It's Route 20, right?
Yes.
So, are you talking whereabouts on Route 20? Is that on the curve? Is that on near that oak?
Going towards, going towards Auburn, just past the French River Bridge, the French River Crossing.
Just those few houses there? They, they made those R3?
Those are R3 and it also reaches down. So, the R3 area goes all the way down into Lester, Lester, Lester Street. So, it's a lot more acreage than, than what I'm describing. But in essence, at, in '71, the zoning map then identified that car to all as commercial.
There were a lot of houses there. In town, some of them have gotten ripped down.
Mm-hmm.
And there's only the other side of the street now that has just a few ranch houses on the side. So, you're talking that area there, right?
Are you talking about Route 20 and Route 56?
Just, just past, so Route 20, 56, going down Route 20 towards Auburn.
Going towards Cumberland Farms. It's on the right side, there's a bunch of houses on that side. That must be what you're talking about.
Yeah. When you pass over the French River-
Yep.
And the, the condos would be on the left. There's an R3 zone there.
Got a zoning map?
Attempted to pull it up there.
Are there houses there now?
Yes.
And people live there?
Yes. Yes.
Why, why, why are we proposing this, then?
That, that came up through, um, former planning board member Le Blank mentioned.
Yeah.
He, he got some comments from, from residents there.
There's a lot, a lot of those probably older, older couples that no one else would want to live on that street, to tell you the truth, now versus back 50 years ago, probably. I, I don't know. They look like they're older homes. They probably have elderly people in them. Maybe, maybe they, they want them to be business because the other side of the road is.
I think I'd rather, I think I'd like to hear from those people before we potentially slap a burden on them by rezoning their property. It could be a burden, it could not be a burden. I don't know. Well, they're pre-existing use.
Right.
It's not going to impact their use.
They would be protected.
No. It's just a- No, no. What we could do is, we could, we could make, we could make, cut those so that those lots of record would, the smaller portion could be general business. I mean, I, I don't know what the zoning map looks like if we could go 300 feet off the center line of Route 20.
Is that what they are now?
Yes.
They're R3. And the proposal would be to convert that area to what?
To, so it's consistent with the neighboring districts, so it would be general business.
Well, the other side of the street, we just changed that zoning boundary to 1,000 feet off, off of Route 20, the other side of the street. So, we could do something similar to this side. I'm, I'm just surprised it's, they're totally R3. I thought they would have been split zones, so you could do either one.
Those, those are R3. Nothing's binding here.
Yeah, no. Take a look at it.
At the next meeting, I'll, I'll, I'll pull it up.
Take a look at it. I mean, that, that's why we got a provision that you want to change. The first one is the bylaw of the potential zoning, you know, of the, the district boundary division, you know?
Correct.
Could make those affected the same way. I don't know. All it is, is after those houses, their, their backyard drops off into a swamp, you know?
So, that's, that's all that I had. And, and, you know, with the feedback here tonight, I'll, I'll certainly follow up on the earth removal with, with the Board of Selectmen and- and-
Yeah, I just want, I want their approval.
Absolutely, absolutely. But with respect to the other items, happy to, to have a, just a, it's not a public hearing or anything, but just, I'll do, I'll do like last year, the, just a brief presentation overview, a little bit more detail, and then if the board is comfortable with any of them, to advance them to request Board of Selectmen to refer over for the actual public hearing, and then we'll, we'll take it from there.
All right. I have no problem with that, Tony. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to pick on you, I'm just trying to give you my insight and what I've seen over the years, you know?
Absolutely, absolutely. Much appreciated, and, and if there's anything that, that members feel might be of interest to, zoning wise, just feel free to, to reach out to me or, or to you, Mr. Chairman, and happy to, to see if there's something we could, we could work on language.
Okay. Well, thank you on that. We have a resubmission of the 75 Depot Road.
Yeah, we've got a big resubmission.
Okay.
Back and better than ever.
Well, they've, they've moved the road, let's put it that way. They've moved the road to the other side, away from the railroad tracks, onto the other side, right against the fence of 395, I'm sure.
Yes, so Mr. Chairman-
Nothing has changed, other than the fact they've, they've updated their plan.
Didn't they make it bigger?
Well, they made that, they made it bigger, but they're going to have to meet the same criteria, they've got only a certain amount of footprint, they can throw everything in. Anyway, I know the taxes were paid last time. We have a complete submission from dated 1/25/22, Oxford Lee and Ventures LLC. I thought they would have tried to get through, see, they didn't need to submit to us to continue on with the Conservation Commission, because that's what pulled the plug on it the first time. That's why I asked prior to a meeting if they were done with conservation, because you hate to advertise and open this thing again, and all of a sudden there's another big problem with conservation. Couldn't they have gone through that and showed a revised plan and gotten approval from them before they came to us? I, I would have recommended that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's where all their problems seem to stem from, because of this site.
They've been there a few months with, with conservation.
Yeah, yeah. I don't care, it's their money, okay? My only advice to Mary at the time was, she only had things electronically sent to her, and that was after even the submittal date. We'll accept the submission, but I wanted to throw there, their opening of the public hearing, so the beginning of April. Two or three meetings away. Give them the time to get back, give you the time to get back to the third-party reviewer with the new plan, and we could have some more technical review meetings on that or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And you're, now you're saying there's some ZBA problems because of this new plan. They're going to need to deal with that, too.
Yes, it looks like they'll need two variances. They originally, we were looking at possibly four or five, but with the change of the roadway, we need to reduce the number of variances, but nothing's been filed yet, but that's just on reading of this, of this current plan.
Okay.
The, we have received the funds for the peer review work, so that peer review work will, will continue with these new revised plans. So, Ms. Chairman, however you and the board see fit, we could have them here in a month, on March 14th, but if we wish to have them come in April, certainly up to the board.
Tony, didn't the town of Auburn provide some feedback on the first, so do they also, are they going to look at this also, or how?
They'll be getting a second copy of this whole thing.
Correct.
It's like where they're starting from scratch all over again.
So, but why were they included in on that? Because it abutted them?
Yeah, they got land in Auburn down there.
Okay.
And it was, they were trying to protect their residents by the way the wording was written there, their trailer, they thought trailer trucks were going to go through Auburn roads down there. Okay?
That's the input I got.
The roads are hardly fit for cars.
Oh, I know, yeah, yeah. It's tight.
Why would they have, I'm just trying to think of a site, why would you have trucks going through Auburn from that site?
Because nothing stopped them from doing that. Nothing, nothing really stopped them from doing that. All they were looking at was a magnitude of truck deliveries and trucks going and that. I mean, my opinion is, the only thing going to go to Auburn is the people that come from Auburn to work in Oxford, in that facility.
Right.
Okay? Car traffic, that's it. But I got the opinion after reading that and after looking at the way the, the traffic study was done, that there was nothing impeding traffic, trailer trucks from going down.
Milbury Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing's stopping them.
What trailer truck is going to drive Milbury Road?
Someone who's never driven it before.
Yeah, well, you know what? Today, today's, they use their phones instead of using the commercial GPSs. I've seen trailer trucks go where trailer trucks shouldn't be.
If we decide to do this, we can always just say left, no left turn coming out of the site, I mean.
Well, that, that's, that's what was proposed.
And no trucks over-
I'm going to send them to the highways or whatever.
All these trucks are going to come off of 395 and go on to 395. That's the way I look at this whole project. We'll have to have that in writing somewhere, too.
Looking forward to harnessing all of this.
That's what the, that's what the third-party reviewer was discussing also, a technical review. He was, he was concerned about that. He wanted trucks to be forced to take a right out of the facility and go on to 395 again. And that's what we'll, we'll push on that again. I just, I just, I didn't want to get stuck with having a public hearing and having all sorts of big questions, okay? First thing I want to do, it took, it took three or four weeks last time to have the-
Peer reviewer.
Peer review done. So my opinion is, we're going to do nothing until a peer review is done, based upon what they submitted. And that has nothing to do with them going to conservation, because, you know, that's the way they want to play the game, okay? If I was them, I would have waited to submit to us until they knew conservation was happy with the road the way it was, and it, to me, it looked like there had to be a lot of, you know, they're going to be filling in some wetlands and have to put their road in. They're crossing right over through wetlands, so they're going to have to mitigate somewhere, and I'm not sure where that's going, so. I thought, I thought from what I was reading, they were still going through.
You're, you're correct. And in the plan, it has mitigation areas and adding new wetlands to make that one take away.
They're going to have to, because they've got to fill in a lot to put in that road.
So conservation will have some work for them.
I just don't want to, I don't want to get, I don't want to get all the neighbors all riled up. They're going to, you know they're going to be here again, just like they were last time, but I want to make sure we had some more Ts crossed than I thought it.
Makes sense.
So we'd all understand what was happening. So I would, I'd entertain a motion to accept this application for a special permit in site plan review.
So move.
Stormwater management, is that in there or is that conservation?
No, that's conservation.
Conservation, so it's just those two.
Yep.
And schedule a public hearing for. What do you figure?
We were thinking March 14th, but we could wait until-
Well, let's go to 28. I want, I want, I want, I want the third-party reviewer to have something available, and I'm sure before we do that again, we're going to end up having a technical review again, right? I would think that would be-
We may, we may. We're, we're meeting this week. I'm meeting with the, with the peer reviewer, looking at the Concom stuff, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it. Maybe they can get some, I don't know, I don't know how much conservation knows about this new road, if this is where they want it.
They do.
They want, this is where they want it.
Yes, 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 so it's, well-
But they're increasing the footprint now, and that, that's going to change some wetland parameters there, too, and everything else. Are they getting rid of truck, truck parking?
They're increasing the, the building, same impervious area, they're reducing the, the amount of parking for, for vehicles. They believe that they can make the project work with, with less parking spaces. But the actual footprint of the, of the impervious area, the parking lot and building, hasn't changed. The building itself has increased in size by about 80,000 or 100,000 square feet. The, the roadway they moved over-
How can they reduce parking if they're going to have more employees?
They, they don't, based on their information, they don't believe that they, they, they need all that parking.
What does that parking say in our bylaw? Are they, they going to violate anything in there?
No, no, we, we feel as though they would be in compliance. Building Commissioner, I looked at that, too, so we feel as though they'll, they'll be okay.
Okay.
Okay, so March 28, 7:05.
7:05 PM. Make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Roger. Further discussion? Chris, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, six, six affirmatives.
And we have all the documents now on the website, with the exception of the plan says, you can see it's quite large, so we hope to have a compressed file on the website tomorrow, so everybody can access. Welcome to take those home, but if you wish to leave them here, it's totally fine. We have, we have space to file them.
Okay. Okay, one of the big concerns about that project is going to be noise, okay? And for my own curiosity, we know they can supply a lighting plant that can, they can keep all the light within the site. What about noise? How much noise are they going to generate? And what kind of plan can you come up with for sound? Now, I know there's truck traffic there, they got tons of sound already in that neighborhood, okay, but they're not going to want to hear that. They're going to want, want to say it's a, it's a facility that's going to generate additional noise. It'd be, it would behoove them to supply some sort of plan about noise.
Is it zoned?
It's zoned lighting.
It's zoned for what they want, right?
But you've got a road right next to the railroad tracks, which I'm sure when the railroad goes by, that makes some noise, okay, but that only goes by once, oh, a day?
I don't know.
Once a week?
I want to say three, four times.
Three, four times.
Three, four runs a day.
Is it? It's, it's that much?
Oh, yeah.
But I know from what I, what I gathered from some of the neighbors, they were concerned about their-
Mitigation.
I think it would be good for them to include it, but I mean, they are set back significantly through the woods as well, so.
I, I do understand that, but you know how it is.
But they're going to, they're going to want to explain it.
But there must be a way of documenting what type of noise they're going to generate from the perimeters of the property.
Oh, yes.
Just like you can, you can put a plan together to show how many lumens of light are going to go beyond the property. How about sound? As a planning board member, I'm, I'm anxious to understand what can be given to-
I can say, based on a, on my last study I did when I was in college, back when we carved it into stone-
Yes.
-that you can actually map out sound like you map out contours.
Yep.
So, I actually did a, they had a, on the, on the Mass Pike, I did a, they did a-
Well, you know, my, my house is set back 1,000 feet from the Mass Pike, and I can hear all the truck tra, all the traffic going by, all the time.
You're going to have all the lovely trucks backing up, DOT whistles going off when they back up, then?
But is, is that, is nuisance more of the board of health matter, or do we have a bylaw on noise, on planning?
So, so I think under, we don't have a, a direct bylaw on noise, to my knowledge, but, but there are things that we could talk about when we have some information from a noise study or so, and perhaps it's, it's reducing the speed down-
I think, I think we should demand a noise study, because you know what? They can put, they can put microphones out there, at the perimeter of that lot, and they can record all the truck traffic and that going by 395 and that, and they'll have some, here's your baseline.
Yep.
Okay? And I don't know what they're going to have, they're going to have, they may not generate much noise at all inside, I have no clue what's going on in there.
Well, to your point and Tony's point, it's something we can talk about, but is it something that we can issue an enforceable condition on that would survive appeal?
I think there's ways to get there. I, I don't think it's an actual condition that says the operations must be at this decibel or less, but there's vegetation, landscaping, ways to mitigate noise in general, like we would in any site plan, location of those actual parking spaces, where those trailers are, how many are closer to the residential side, if you will, which you'll see, that was a change in the plan. They took out a whole row of trailer parking, moved it between 395 and the actual building. The building itself can also be some buffer for, for the noise.
They can put stuff behind the building and, yeah, okay. That's, that's all good stuff, that's all good stuff.
Yes, yes, and the, and again, the speed going down the roadway.
You've got all your noise handles on the roofs and things like that that generate noise, okay? They should be able to document what that noise is.
Yes.
It could be well below truck, truck traffic on 395. It could be almost invisible.
You know, it, it reminds me of, and, and Greg, you just jogged my memory of these sound barriers along, along highways and, and how the federal highway uses this information. There's some general noise that's generated, of course, from a 395 or from a turnpike, and sometimes just putting up a, a sound barrier may not actually mitigate noise because of the, the topography or the landscaping, or if there's tracks nearby, so.
This whole facility is going to be below the railroad.
So it's, it's very interesting information, and to your point, it's very similar to, to the light candles, how sound travels.
Yeah.
And it, it can vary, it can vary, just like a flight path, and when it's a cloudy day, that noise carries a lot more, speaking from experience.
Anyway, okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Well, wait.
No?
You have anything else you want to add?
I have nothing else, no.
Well, you look at me, I got the cue.
No, 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 I didn't look at that.
Hold on, maybe a head fake.
I just wanted to make sure the planning director report was complete.
I think it is.
Thank you, Tony.
You did. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. You voted.
Okay, make your motion quick.
Oh, it just happened.
Mark wants to get home.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.